What's up everybody? We are back with another portion of our range. We are gonna work on the bottom part of our calling range in a three bet pot like it's gonna be like as I checked and suited we can suit that stuff like that. So very close, but I think it's a call.
Um, do we ever have a four bet here?
I don't. Yeah, I don't know. Is this a call?
I'm folding.
Yeah, this is a four bet bluff.
I would not.
Or even not. It's like his ace check off or four bit bluff here?
I think it's in there. I think it's I think this is a V pip for sure. I think you're definitely continuing. But um, it's like razor thin. I know it is from the button.
Yay.
Okay.
Like yeah, razor thin or bed bluff.
I think ace jack off is gonna be more popular there, but.
Yep, a little more four better. We don't call, right?
No.
Uh.
So I like the state helps, so but it's more.
And it's hard, honestly, like you got some attractive components here like I don't I don't know like I think I would fold in game, but um, I could definitely understand. I think with ace of spade is a slam dunk continue.
Yeah.
Ace of spade even with the them.
Yeah, just a spade period, right?
The tennis spades calls.
But the E V is a lot better with the nice. Double the E V with an ace.
Oh, double double.
We have a check raise. Did you see big, big check raise frequency 50%?
Mm hmm. Yeah, it's because it's at the bottom of your range.
So that eight.
Now fold.
Yeah, I think we're getting strung along at this point. You can.
No one is raising.
Unless you unless you do that.
Well, for the same reason you check raise it or you raise it on the flop, raise it on the turn. Worst end you get here with.
He borrowed on a card that's not good for his range.
Uh, this is like a full frequency call, I think.
Yeah, right? As much as I like to be nitty facing three backs. This is like too strong.
You just have.
I just I don't think I've ever four bet jam that, but uh, um, I'm gonna call here. Three straight, three flush.
Well, problem is it's a king eye board, so we should be over folding. S P R is.
It is.
And do you?
I think we just have a.
S P R is three.
Even if we overfold, though, this one's still in our calling range. This this.
It's a three bet pot is the only problem like that's the only reason I would continue.
Would you rather call this or offsuit with the single spade?
Uh, I think they're very similar E V. No, probably the front door.
I'd rather have this.
So it's a call. You guys think?
I would call here.
If you're gonna start over folding this, I think you'll overfold the queen ten, the queen ten of hearts.
Uh, yeah, I agree. Scotty, I think if uh, you're if you're folding here with a handle like this, I think you should just fold it pre. So maybe that's not true. Actually, that's a bit of a stretch. Um, okay, I think we play check here.
No. Oh, you know what? You're right. We haven't.
We have to kind of struggle. It went here two higher flushes. Like if we had, you know, queen, 10, queen, nine, it starts to get more attractive.
So here's my logic for it. My my logic for it is, okay, like if we bet here and he jams, we're doing pretty piss poor as it is. If we play check here and he checks the river, we have a pretty good bluff candidate versus a very crippled range like he doesn't have much in that range to be if he plays check, 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 right? So it's like, he's gonna be playing pretty face up on rivers and like we also protect the rest of our stack versus value that's kind of slowing down here.
Yeah, because for me, I just see a backdoor flush, but it's our best queen eye. So he, I would go for worse queen eye to to bet here, I think, like.
Maybe.
Queen nine.
It may be that simple. I think I'm just um, I think I'm just very heavy check here with my flush draws in general.
But for different reasons.
When we bet, don't get check it. When we bet, what size? Because we obviously bet this a silver.
Oh, Scotty, you gotta polarize.
Half pot's pretty nice.
I think you go way bigger than half pot. I think you're going like bananas here.
I think it's so shallow. If we're going bigger than half pot, I want to put it all in. That's the problem.
You might just jam with your really good draws here, to be honest.
Yeah, because if you go half pot and he jams, aren't you priced in now?
That's a king I bought in a three bad part. That's very good for him. We have to.
Yeah, but I mean, just with your flush draw alone.
So would you consider jamming a hand like nine, 10 of hearts here?
Yeah, this is good. So that's why it's bet small. It's betting half pot, not jet. It's betting smaller. So that it can fold, I think.
It also retains some folding on the river. But we don't really.
It's not really jamming. It just is going that half pot size.
It's putting everything in the 55% sizing.
Okay.
And it is betting a lot.
We're betting fours.
Inch goes.
No.
Clubs and the diamonds.
Oh, look at that queen jack. It 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 doesn't like to bet with the.
Yeah, but be cautious because.
Oh, okay.
It's only there with a sliver of it.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Makes it here.
Yeah, we can ignore that.
But it's a sliver, obviously. So what about the hand that stopped there? So that's not gonna be a good example.
Ace jack.
And let's look at the E Vs a little bit. Okay. So we are supposed to bet kind of frequently here on this turn.
But we're checking most majority check with our with our specific hand.
Yeah.
So let's majority check.
Our best kings and our worst kings and not the ones that have straight equity.
And the front, in the queen nine, the front door did all the betting, the back door did none.
So queen, yeah. Yeah. Okay, so you want to structure around nine X basically here. Nine X that can make a straight on the river. So like queen nine here is a better bet than queen jack.
That is much more. And how about that?
Oh, yeah.
Hello. I just don't know how to size it. I mean, I I think we have the best hand pretty much every time as played.
Think if you go all in, it's a good size, no?
I think all in is too big for what we're expecting the small blind to have.
Well.
We want to get called by a couple worse flushes. We want to get called by king five X. He could have played very defensively and he rivers trips like ace five or something could be checking down.
Right.
All of the cookies?
Yeah. I'm always.
That's it.
Oh, I know.
Um, this is gonna be a solver special sometimes, but like it's gonna call and jam, I think.
Mostly.
But on, but on.
Lover special is not pure.
Change move, though. Let's let's do the call because it's not interesting to finish.
That's right. Exactly, Scotty. I think we all know how to four bet jam ace five suited. So man, I'm torn here like this is I feel like this is a reasonable clicker at some frequency.
No, I don't think so.
I'm not folding.
Why not?
Just fold. Just fold.
Why not?
Yeah, no straight interaction. It's kind of kind of rough.
So.
The real question for me, guys, here is ace seven of diamonds. One dip above the six.
Yeah, that's fair. Ace, I think ace seven is a good candidate.
To do what?
Um, I think you might have some clickers in there. I I feel like this is a clicker type board, so we're gonna have that component. It's just finding where it's coming from.
When you say click, you don't mean min click, do you?
Look at pocket nines. Look at pocket eights and sevens, Scotty. These are the hands. This is what I'm talking about when I say clicker.
But but you don't mean min click it, do you?
Uh, it's pretty close. I mean, it's a little bit larger.
Okay. Got it.
So, yeah. We would have got him with the check raise, but.
Yeah, we would have. Um, this is just a high frequency call, I think.
Uh huh.
I think I think the ace six and the ace seven might have some folds here.
I'm folding a lot.
It's suited, guys.
And the ace fives and lowers one, but I'm wrong.
Yeah, okay. You don't fold any suited aces there?
And I think some of the wheels might have some bluffing.
Nope, you don't fold any of them. And some of the wheels have and wheels have plus.
Oh.
What?
Backdoor flush.
It's a three bet pack. We don't really call with backdoors.
Uh, okay. I'd be surprised if this one doesn't.
The fold.
Again, no straight interaction at all.
So the thing that we found was is.
Would you call with an ace ten of heart?
Yeah.
That's two. That's two backdoors. So, yeah.
Yeah, and and an overcard, another overcard to the nine, so.
Not even pure with the accent of hearts. And then your call is zero point zero point zero point zero. Okay.
So in three bet pots, even to a small bet.
You don't.
Two backdoors is two backdoors is still marginal. Even two backdoors and one overcard is still marginal.
This is a fold.
It's close, though, right? I think it likes.
Under the gun, under the gun one.
Yeah, because we're very deep to think all. That's the only.
Maybe. Actually, you might be right, Louis.
Of course, it makes a lot of straights and flushes. It's a nice hand to to beat aces with, right?
You can go all the way. Okay, okay.
All right, good game.
Sometimes sometimes you flop open ended, you lose a lot more chips.
Call.
It's a lot of raising.
Yep.
You're gonna be raising into like ace, queen or pocket king or something.
Ace queen under the gun versus under the gun one is gonna call a lot.
Yeah.
What a horrific, horrific turn card that improves us.
Well, Tim, that's why I said good game.
This is a disaster because he just has a scheme.
Yeah, we're we're toast here.
We lose to everything now. It's king, it's queen, it's jack, kings, queens.
I wanted to fold. I thought I thought it was stupid to fold because you have too much equity, but.
This is one of the rare situations where you pick up equity, but you're still just punting if you make a call. It's like you don't see this very often. This is pretty funny. But yeah, he's just.
Yeah.
God's in that's. Um.
A fold.
I think you actually call this.
What's the worst? The king you call here?
Ooh, maybe ace, maybe king seven, king eight?
Oh, dirty. It's a fold.
King ten.
We are. We're I guess we're a little early position.
King ten suited. Scotty is right.
We are. We aren't colorblind, right? You do. You do see that little bit of yellow there.
Yeah.
Okay, just.
This here.
But that's a raise.
That's non-existent, non-existent.
Oh, got it.
But then look at how we're mixing with our suited queens there.
Yeah, those those kind of feel bad, right?
Yeah, and then he's jack off. That's kind of easy.
Uh, okay, I'm gonna be enticed to play clicker here.
Yeah. I'm good with that.
Two overs.
Okay.
Get a lot better to fold.
Raise.
We're not gonna be able to. You're not gonna know, though. It just it doesn't matter.
We're gonna win the hand. Watch.
Are you gonna go?
Repeat.
Um, eighty deep. It's gonna mix raises and calls. Um, check fold, man.
I kind of.
Big sizing.
Just king, huh?
We just don't beat anything. Just um.
Not full.
Fold. Yeah, it's under the gun one. It's a fold.
What do you do with?
Ace clean off.
It's a good four bet.
Ace queen off is.
Mostly.
Calling, I guess.
I think he's cleaning off the four betting a fair bit, right?
It's under the guy. It's under the gun one, though, man.
I'm folding.
Yeah, it's true. Although wait, we have.
Four bets. It's a good four bet.
Always like in almost every position, ace clean off does what it's for betting.
You guys are for betting his jack here, everyone?
No.
Yeah, I am. I'm probably doing it too much.
Really? You open under the gun, you get a three bet and then you're looking at ace jack and you're like, yeah.
Yeah, man, this guy doesn't have it. He doesn't have it. Come on.
What? He three bets under the gun. What else do you think he has?
He doesn't have it.
Jesus.
He is ace queen. He scared money.
Get him a fold. You're a brave guy, Tim.
You're betting ace jack. You're betting ace jack is a bluff because it has the ace blocker.
Yeah, yeah, totally. Okay, got it.
Um, this may four bet sometimes.
Yeah, because ace jack with with an ace blocker.
I don't know. I'm just not here.
It's got it. It's got it. At 11%.
Fold.
Name.
Fold still.
This is like. I didn't even think it was close, but it was closer than I gave it credit for.
King ten spicy.
Um, I'm folding here, too.
Uh, not immediately. We're in position.
It's got some orbits too here, I think.
You guys are nuts, man. Get out of this pot.
I don't really want to forget this. I want to come one V pip. I want to call.
Yeah.
If I want to continue, I want to call.
Funny.
Yeah, good. I thought it was mixed. It felt mixing.
And then we can pull flop.
Yep.
Enjoy your chips, sir.
It seemed like a good idea, but then.
If we had hearts there, we would.
It looked good on paper. Uh, I don't know, man. Like this is gonna be a I I feel like four bet jamming.
Lover special.
Well, it's okay. There it is. I was gonna say call.
Oh, my goodness.
Haven't seen that. Haven't seen that in a while, huh?
That's me in live tournaments every time.
Um, I think I like calling here. Yeah.
Okay.
We're out of position. How often was the call? I didn't see the frequency.
Hundred.
Hundred. Wow, okay.
One, zero, zero.
Okay. Check call.
Um, he's got a lot of a sex. So yeah, I kind of own check call.
Front door, we can call, right?
Yep.
You can even raise some.
You bet one point eight, so it's gonna raise some, but I I think I like call still. Uh, check, just play check.
Why was this 100% call out of position when for small blinds? We didn't even want to call 10 nine.
Positionally, it's quite different. You gotta think about like what their ranges are doing.
Because this is like E P versus late position, so he's kind of wide. And then I'm sure like he tends don't really do well here, but suited eight is kind of you need some. I like the way Galen put this for me a while ago. He said, you need some board coverage for this kind of portion of the deck. When you're this deep, you need it. Because other some boards are gonna come down and you're not gonna have any any connection with it. So you need these ace six, ace three, nine, eight suited, eight, seven suited, but you don't need that 10 line suited.
Because you have the ace 10.
Well, and it's also like it's a function of like the cutoff makes money by attacking these middle field opens with like bluffs and things, right? So cutoff has a ton of bluffs. The big blind does not make money bluffing under the gun one. That range doesn't have a lot of bluffs.
That's true.
Also, when when we were betted at, when we are bet from the big blind and the small blind, the bet is bigger.
Yeah, that's another piece of the puzzle.
I like it. Sounds good.
Um, now, 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 okay, it's over. We abandoned ship.
Yep, don't raise. Uh, given what Galen just said, this is this is a call.
Sometimes.
Yeah, okay.
Like you need some of these sometimes. It's gonna mix.
But I would like the 10 nine better.
Yeah.
Just because it's better.
I would fold here. No?
No.
Well, let's go as as played, Scotty.
As corrected. Now fold.
Yeah. Oh. Just that.
Fold.
Um. Yeah. It's mixing, right?
Mixing, but mostly folds.
Hmm.
Paul.
This is just a call, I think. So this is an arrangement where I think you do see some suited aces fold like the ace six.
Well, if there's a suited ace that is folding, I would take this one.
Six, seven. So you do see some folds, but this one like honestly, this is like second class call here. It's not that great, right?
Honestly, I'm doing a lot of that in in general.
What was the difference? What was the hand that that didn't?
We are early position, so we opened with a strong range and he attacks us. The other ones, we were not early positioned. We were like middle.
Okay, and also was he the small blind or the big blind the last time?
I don't remember.
Okay, I wasn't sure if that was the difference.
And also you gotta remember like our position, when we open with a tight range, these can go into fold. When we have a wider range like middle position, we have to still call these because.
Right.
Or else he could bluff us to death.
Right.
Two, nine.
Call.
Not a great call, right?
But a great call.
It's a great call.
Point seven nine chips. You win cash games with point seven nine chips.
Yeah, I guess. Okay. A lot better if I called in a seven, six super. Now we check.
No, let's bet it.
Why? We call the three bet.
It's three bit pot, but because we want to, we still want to bet our best made hands and our draws, and this is.
You don't have a skin. You don't have kings.
So we.
But we have pocket, we have pocket ace. We have king, queen, king, jack, king ten.
You guys are gonna get roasted here when this guy just blast you. I'm not betting. I'm not betting here, man.
And we and we want to get folds from hands like ace five of diamonds.
Look at the bets. Look at them.
Okay. You guys are talking as if you were gonna bet like it's betting two here.
I would be betting like five here in game. Yeah. It's out there.
It's a three bet.
I feel like I feel like in game, this big blind range, when he plays this like silly check, check line right here, it's just gonna it never turns out well for me.
Like when they check here, they just have kings.
Yeah, like I I played, I played bet here and then I get checked jammed on and then I'm like, oh, well, do I call with my open ender or do I just, what do I do?
You just make a faraz and then you say, oh, well, I was bluffing. But then I was value betting, so I'm gonna call.
Yeah, that's how I feel about that. Okay, so he double checked. This will have some flushes in there, I think, but I'm a little more confident, maybe putting a bet out there.
You're confident here, right?
If we bet, I think we need to bet at least nine.
A little more confident.
Nothing changed. You don't have a spade.
Yeah, but he checked twice. That changed.
Okay, yeah.
He's kind of presenting a pretty capped range after he double checks.
Okay, okay, yeah. I've already checked twice, right? Makes sense. So they check twice and then three bet five, we can stab it.
Oh, all right. Um, you got a pretty good bluff raise.
No, we need a spade.
I think you do need a spade. Actually, I think you're right.
Oh, no.
J K.
Look at this. Why do you want to block here in the first place?
You get a million better hands to fold and he just doesn't have the nuts in this.
And you block the straight.
It's a three bet pot. There's a king and an ace on board. I think this.
But it went check. It went check, 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 bet small.
And then he bets small. What do you think he has? He clearly has the ace.
There's ace jack. Just a, I think this is just a complete dog range here and you're gonna be able to like go look at the range. I just don't think there's anything like super strong in it.
Like ace queen, you mean?
Pre, you got two yellow sizes. Yeah, so he's got, he's protecting it with ace jack and then you have like a bunch of paper aces in this range.
And we block ace jack.
You have like fractions of these paper aces.
Do you think he folds? Oh, he does fold a bunch of them. He does. Do you think?
He pulled, he pulls jacks, jack ten suited.
Do you think people are gonna fold the nace to the?
Queens.
I mean, it's hard to say, right? Like, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know.
Some nets might even fold a straight here.
So.
That would.
You got is a paper ace, my friend, so you are gonna fold.
If you can get a a straight to fold here, like you're just printing money.
This hand reminds me of a play that I think I need to show. Tell me.
While you're showing that, I want to point out that 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 I got that fold uh, much easier with my bet on the flop and my bet on the turn. It was best scary to get that fold.
All right, so let's see what happened here. This guy opens from from the cutoff. We are eighty big blind effective. So he opens from the cutoff. And then I dream it. And then he calls me. So on the flop, he checks. I bet small. He calls. Burn king of spade comes in. I'm like, yeah, this is an amazing card for me. A king is great for my range. Ace of spade. I blocked the nod, blah, 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 blah. So I bet 15 and he calls. And then on the river, he checks. And then I'm looking at this and I'm like, yeah. Ace of spade. Think it's a great spot to bluff, so I go all in. I get snapped off by aces.
This, this feels a bit different, but.
I think your play is pretty good. This seems pretty, yeah.
So I just have questions about the river, really. Like, if he called, when he calls that turn, man, I I'm, I'm pretty sus about tripling off.
Why?
Against tens with a spade, against jacks with a spade.
You know, actually, I don't, I I think it's fine. You showed me this hand, actually. So my comment was, I would have polarized the flop more. Like, I wouldn't have gone small bet here.
Yeah.
But I I think like, tripling off here is probably fine.
Yeah.
Like, you're blocking a lot.
Yeah, so this is pretty good, it seems. Seems like this is a good plan.
Are you, are you sure?
This is like fold there.
In a three bet pot with ace high on the turn, why don't you check?
Because.
It has no showdown value in a three bet.
Well.
The king, the king is the best card for me in the three bet pot because he doesn't have ace king, he doesn't have king. All right, technically.
Might have.
Throw it in the, throw it in the math machine. Let's see what the math machine says.
Yeah.
You think a lot of aces are folded in there on that straight, a flushy, full house board? I think I have the end to try. Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, but like, and like to Galen, I don't know that you get to size up on a seven, eight, nine board, like that's, that's a really good board texture for a caller.
How good is it? How good is it when you're blocking the nuts?
Well, but you're not blocking the nuts, right? Like, because he has.
Yeah, but I think that's exactly a board where you start where you polarize. Not a range, but he board.
Seven, eight, nine, ten, jack is the nuts. Right? Am I missing something? Like, yeah, but it's gonna be, it's it's gotta be a polar board for sure. But like, if you're gonna have anything in your range that's not the nuts here, that's gonna be into a large sizing, I think this is a good candidate. Might be wrong, I don't know.
And he's not supposed to have aces here at eighty.
So a little bit, right? Like, it's great, like, Peter, you're right, like, it doesn't have a huge component.
Yeah.
But if like, what do you, what's jack ten doing here? Jack ten's just small.
Because there's already locked up equity, right?
Jacks and tens are where it's coming from, and then like a minor component of ace jack.
Yeah, because it's a straight board. Somebody said something like that last week.
Yeah, no, yeah, he's definitely right. I just, I, I was underestimate, I was overestimating.
Yeah, it's a nine nine board, right? Usually you wanna size up with tens and jacks, but this here is a straight board, so it changes everything.
Yeah, and he, in a three bet pot, he also has all three sets there, too. So like, you, you don't really have the nut advantage here.
So what, what, what range is it? Are we looking at the?
That was in.
The button? The cutoff and button? We, we do three bet all three of these. We do have all the sets here at some frequency, I'm pretty sure.
Oh, but so does he.
Right, yeah.
They like, no one has the, like, there isn't a big nuts advantage for us because he has.
Oh, there's, there's not a nut advantage for either player, I think. I think the uh. I think he calls all of his big pairs at some frequency. He calls all sets, he calls jack ten. And I think we three bet all of those combos too at some frequency, so it's like, it's a highly contested board, without a doubt.
Well, Peter, you said why barrel turn, right? Because it's a king.
I would definitely be barreling, and I'd be barreling big here on this turn, I think.
Yeah.
Well, the ace of spades barrels, but like, if you don't have the, like, if you don't have the ace of spades, it's highly checking here.
Oh, well, without the ace of spades, it's a completely different story, right?
I don't know, guys. I don't know. Look at this.
He is out there with different other hands, but I agree, you definitely find it easily with the ace of spades.
It checks most with the jack of spades.
Hmm. Interesting, right?
Kind of makes sense. You start to isolate yourself against better parts of his range, like only against better flushes and better flush draws.
What about the ones that don't have a flush draw? What about the ones that don't have a flush draw then? That we're still.
I think then, so. Yeah, but it's like, I think the jack of spades starts runs like reversing fight odds. It's like only is running into better.
Maybe so, maybe you want, maybe they need the jack of spades to really kind of like, you gotta keep valuing, like, if you, if you're. I guess maybe having the jacks not great because you want that in their calling range, if you're gonna be barreling off here. What's the queen doing? Or the ten? Is the queen or the ten more popular?
No, safe.
Not, not really, huh? Not really.
It's really like the. Component we see here is if you have the small card of the suit, you wanna check a lot.
The queen is, the queen is a worse hand than the jack and the ten. It's not play, the, the queen does, does less big betting.
And if you have the I card of the suit in your combo, you wanna bet a lot. That's what we see here. So here I had the I card. I went with the thirteen. Not great sizing, right? But it's a bit of a thinker.
Yeah, it's like, it's still twenty, twenty-five percent of the, the range does it, so it's not a bad sizing.
I think you're just disrespecting the range that he has a little bit by going big, big, big.
Not really, because he's not supposed to flap me with aces, he's not supposed to flap me with king, not supposed to flap me with ace king. And then I'm uncapped, so when the king comes, I'm in my mind, I can lose my money. I can just blast it just because of the nature of the turn.
See, this is like.
One, nature of the turn is really good. Two, I have a spade. All I need, all I need here is a big spade.
So.
I'm bluffing.
We're a hundred effective, um, verse three bet. Small button. Yeah, I mean, he is supposed to be pure raising all of these other combos.
Of course.
For sure.
Because we're too deep. That's what I thought.
Well, and ranges are super wide also, because it's cutoff button.
Hmm.
Like, let's say if it was like low jack button, does it change the story much? Nah, a little bit. Like, you start seeing. Minor frequencies, but not much, like.
It's really a question of depth. At eighty big blinds, they really want to build, start to build a pot with his best hands.
Yeah, I know, I, I agree.
Losing a V.
I, I would say, I guess, I think about something like this. This is like Andy was asking about ten percent of aces. This is kind of like the justification for ten percent of aces, right? You see like a GTO range, and then you see this guy show up with a component that's not in the GTO range? Because he plays it a little bit differently, like, it's kind of the importance of note taking and like, being a little bit flexible.
Oh, yeah. It turns out that ace jack, when it's a very good pump.
Now, like, if you really wanted to analyze this spot. You would have to open up Pyo and then put all of his over pairs into a flattening range and see how it. You, you can analyze how it changes things.
Yeah, yeah, but I think the, that the driving thing we see here is like, if you have the ace of spade, you can bluff.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a pretty simple, um, heuristic that, you know.
But I went for it, right into aces and it felt really bad.
Yeah, I, I bet.
I was like, no.
So I'm sorry, did it, did it pull the trigger on the river there?
Yeah, it did.
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, if you shove it up, something I'd really love to see is, what is he folding on that river? What's her, uh, what's her bluff target?
Yeah, like, Jesus Christ.
I was thinking about. Nine X? We can get him off nine X all day long, right?
I, I thought he was folding a bunch of stuff.
I mean, I, I think that's a big bet.
Joke's on you.
But he's folding, he is folding jack nine, jack eight. Ten eight, that's great.
Yeah, eight X, nine X.
Pocket tens.
That's all what I thought it would be. It's very tough for him to play for all the cookies with the king.
Some kings. King, jack, king ten.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
Most pain. With all this, like, yeah.
Yeah. It's like the solver's folding that, but he's not.
Yeah, so this is a still bad. I played GTO and.
You know, I don't think this is a bad hand. I, I don't. I think it's an unfortunate result.
Yeah. Yeah, because I was on fire and I had all these chips and on and on and on. I, I thought I was gonna play like a genius. And then the next thing you know, it fires back. Oh, no. Yeah.
You should dust off Pyo and just put that range in there without the uh, without the three bets.
Yeah, that's.
It wouldn't be that hard.
Projects, uh, in the next few days, I will go get my fifty terabytes. And plug that thing here. And then get back on the Pyo works a little bit.
Oh, and seven, if we wait seven minutes, I can do it.
Oh, well, it's up to you.
I'm kind of curious. I, I mean.
What happens in seven minutes?
You're gonna, you're gonna run a hand during the break? I think that's just ridiculous. Come on, man.
All right, maybe I, all right, you're right, I won't.
That's what happens in seven minutes.
I need, I need, I need another cup of coffee.
Yeah.
LOL, LP's huge Pyo library. Mm hmm. Yeah, before like all of these cloud-based solver things, that's what we did.
Yeah, one hundred fifty pages of uh, reports.
I've got a, I've got a similar terabyte-sized library sitting on my computer.
All right, guys.